We have a quorum here, so we can move forward and bring the meetings to work. So this is Tuesday, December 2nd, first meeting after Thanksgiving. Hope everyone had a great holiday. And our first item is a continued public hearing, is it not, for CG Homes? It's not, I don't know what.
It's continuing.
Yeah. CG Homes LLC, 456 and 462 Harmond Road. This is an application for a preliminary subdivision plat approval, application for stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control, and free removal permit for construction of a four lot subdivision. We last heard it on November 5th. So Ralph, is there anything that you want to bring to our attention before we take comments from board members as well?
I'll just give a quick update, I guess. Just to make everyone aware, the engineering plans were not resubmitted.
Right.
I won't speak for them, but I think Bob said last time that he was okay with his comments being conditions of approval. So therefore, I didn't want to keep submitting plans. We did submit landscape architect plans. We thoroughly confused Dennis. So we kind of been in contact with him, hopefully to the... But we will hear from any comments.
Right, okay. Alrighty. Sabina, or make any further comments?
Sure, um, the only comment I really have is that coverage calculation worksheets need to be resubmitted for the most, or for the plans that we will be considering for preliminary subdivision approval. I also included for the board's information the part two of the EAF, as well as the draft negative declaration. That negative declaration is written in regards to the trees in two ways encompassing both scenarios that you folks will need to decide upon. And that's about it. So there is real no significant environmental impact that you guys will need to determine.
Right.
Review those documents and determine.
Right, presumably we'll do that after we close the public hearing.
Yes, you'll have to make an environmental determination, but after you close the public hearing, before you make a decision.
Right, okay, great, thank you. All right. Bob, did you have some comments?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board and Conservation Board as well. Have a full house, I see in there, looks very crowded. I had four new comments, I'll try to be quick here because I understand there's a lot on the plate with the Conservation Board. NC 5, it's unclear whether the several proposed trees or landscaping's adjacent to the road will be located within a common access easement. I would recommend that they do. So at least we can put in the agreements who's the responsible party to replace them and repair them because it's going to be a roadway. And I don't know if the 40-foot width, Ralph, will be enough. You might have to widen that out a bit and tweak it. Forward for thought. NC 6, it's recommended all trees be at least 10 feet in from the... 10 feet away from the edge of the travel lane, which is the face of curb for safety reasons. We use that on town roads, and this is pretty much a road for all practical purposes. So I would recommend that be same for this road. NC 7, the landscaping plan should provide adequate site distances at all intersections, including the sightline triangles and profiles, based on the proposed speed limit, whatever Ralph comes up with on that. Generally, I believe 15 mph is the speed limit they use. Ralph, correct me if I'm wrong. NC 8 is due to the extensive amount of grading that's required for the turnarounds, for the fire trucks, and also for the access road going to the stormwater basin all the way to the north, which is lot one. This is across lot two, which is going to be privately owned. I'd recommend that there's not only... There's a new slope easement agreement be included in with these other agreements. So again, we have exactly... We know exactly who's going to be the entity to be responsible to maintain those slopes. It's pretty extensive. So these are all items that could be conditions going from preliminary to final, as Ralph stated earlier. So those are the end of my new comments, Mr. Chairman, for now, and thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bob. I think it's important at this point to mention that to a large extent, this will be up to the applicant to make the determination of how you set up the agreements with your homeowners. We had a discussion on this earlier today with council. And what we will be looking for is you to make the decision, but we will be tying it in. We want to tie it in with the actual fee owner of a lot or all of the lots. You guys decide for marketing reasons if the slope is going to be tied into just one of the lots or all four of the lots. We are reluctant just to assign this responsibility to an HOA, which will be formed or may be formed. But you know, the history of HOAs is not very strong, especially in a four lot subdivision. You know, sometimes they don't meet for seven or 12 years or whatever. No one knows who's in charge, no one knows who's the president, no one has minutes. So it'll be up to you folks while you draft these agreements to decide whether or not, for example, on the trees, as Bob alluded to in the beginning, whether that will be tied into the lot owners opposite the roadway coming in, and just those lots or all four lots. But you know, you guys will have to make that decision in terms of your marketing and what you want to see. But we will not just be satisfied with an HOA involved with the responsibility. The town will be looking to make sure that there is more feet in the fire, so to speak, and that we have the ability to go back to a fee owner to comply, to require compliance.
A continuing name of responsibility.
Right. And of course, these will be recorded so that for future owners, they'll, you know, if it's lot number two that has this, then lot number two is in charge of trees, if that's what you guys decide. So we want to make sure that you were aware of that upfront. We really don't care. It's really your decision as to what you guys want to do, what you think is best for, you know, marketing, the future owners, et cetera. Bob, I had a question for you, or a couple of questions for you. Is okay on ST 4, is it okay to defer the speeds for final? You're comfortable with that, speedy's permit?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. And I have one question somewhere in here. You mentioned, oh, the total cost adjusted for 4% inflation. Is that a fixed number that the town is fixed? Or is that flexible? It seems high right now, but it was very low if we use 4% when things were at 9% a couple of years ago.
Yes, generally, I compare it against the ENR, which is an established rate, which is based on historical perspective. They're usually along the same rate, 3.8, 3.94 historically on all the subdivisions I've been working on over the past, I don't know, 17 years going to the planning board. I've always used 4%, and I've never really pushed back from the applicants or the engineers or the contractors.
Okay, so it's a set fee, okay, that's fine, that's great. Good. Are you done?
Absolutely.
Bob, I got two quick ones for you.
Yes.
The memo from the Assistant Civil Engineer about the slopes on the basin, is that... I just, I've never seen that picked up by anybody. I only just see in his memo. Is that going to be taken care of? Okay.
Yeah, that's... I'm going to defer to Jeff on that. You can answer that, Jeff. That's what the stormwater slope, based on the DEC manual. You want to handle that one, Jeff?
It's just I keep seeing it listed, I just want to make sure it gets done.
Yeah, there's a... I think the next slope is like 3:1.
Yes.
But what's on the... I think what's on the drawing is 2:1. Is that right?
Yes, it's too steep.
Okay, so 3:1 is the... That's the maximum slope on the... Side slope on the retention ponds.
It's already corrected, it's just you haven't...
We haven't seen it.
Thank you.
Bob, a question for you on NC 6. The 10 feet, is that code? Or is that a design standard we try to maintain?
The 10 feet I get from section 109 of the Town of Newcastle Town Code, that's usually on roads that are going to be dedicated to the town that we've used in all subdivisions. And this, for all practical purposes, is going to be a roadway. Full width is 20 feet, and you got two foot on each side, that's 24 feet. So in my eyes, this is a road. So I would recommend it be 10 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Section 109 of Town of Newcastle for streets specifications.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
So I... Can I...
You're done?
I'm all done. Bob, a couple of questions. So since from what I understand, the discussion earlier of the HOA is not going to be as important in this for the trees, do I have to put the trees within the easement? Can I leave them outside the easement? Therefore, they will be the responsibility of the lot owner?
Right.
If that's to the Bob Kirkwood's point, the chairman, if you want to go that route, I would recommend matching it in the agreements. I would recommend putting notes on the plan, on the subdivision plat. So when the owners call us up 10 years from now, we know how to answer it.
Okay. And then the next question is about the site distance. You're talking about the site distance for that... I'll call it a road, but it's a common driveway in front of the four houses?
That is correct. I think there's only going to be two side triangles there. Very nominal, it shouldn't be that much, 15 mph. The sight lines is not that much. But I don't, you know, a lot of times I see with the landscaping plan, they do block those site distances. I know the speed limit's quite low. But you know, all it takes is one accident, and you have 10 attorneys looking at it, and it's tough to answer those questions of why we did not obliged by that. So I would recommend that you do that. I do that on every subdivision, on every... Did that in Toll Brothers and every road I look at, so.
Okay, just want to clarify that, yep.
Okay, great. Dennis, you have some thoughts and questions?
Sure. I guess just to start, you know, a lot of my memo, you know, the color scheme and whatnot, as Ralph indicated. So if you look at the top of my memo, the only item I removed, reviewed rather, was the planting plans that were submitted. And they included, you know, a table of the trees in a certain numbering scheme, which had changed, I guess, from the prior submission because, you know, Ralph was looking to, I guess, remove, reduce the number of trees removed. But in doing so, there was a reset of the designated numbers that, you know, each tree was assigned, you know, sort of on the plan. And I, not being privy to that, that really, I think, influences the majority of my comments under the tree replacement plan because I was working under one set of variables, for lack of a better term. And they were operating under another, which we've since clarified in a conference call. So I'm not really going to spend much time on that because I think going forward, we're... You know, not that the numbers were off that greatly because, like I said, you know, you're only reducing 14 trees. But I think we're going to be more aligned going forward on that. So I'm just going to jump right to, you know, I just gave my rationale and justification for this particular application for the board to consider that if you wanted to include the Norway maples as part of what the ultimate replacement requirements are going to be. And I just did that in bulleted form. As stated, I think at the prior meeting, I mean, the first bullet, you know, obviously, maybe the most significant that you would do. Certainly, as the board done this once before for approved preliminary subdivision application with respect to CCSD Button Hook.
To refresh everyone's memory, so in that case, Dennis, we in fact counted them as trees for calculation of replacement.
The ones that were in good and fair condition.
Exactly.
Exactly, it was condition-based, not species-based, exactly. Also, I guess, you know, on the next submission, we would get that sort of a re-revised plan set. The... I think I have seen a full version of the planting cost estimate, but I think what was submitted officially to this board, it got cut off. So just resubmit that in full so that it matches what I previously seen, wasn't formally submitted.
Yeah.
And I just, for the last, since you have the time at this point, with respect to that invasive species removal plan, which I was fine with the plan. Unfortunately, since some of this kind of starts to migrate into the buffer, not just our buffer, but possibly DEC's, but it would be worthwhile now to just determine if or if not your wetlands are DEC jurisdictional because if you don't have to deal with them, then you're only going to be dealing with us. So I would suggest that you do the jurisdictional determination with them now. It doesn't, you know, I think they've gotten better. It doesn't take as much time. You certainly have this sort of as an interim to at least determine if you have to worry about the...
But can you put that in area in final approval?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, some of our problems.
Okay, thanks, Dennis.
Guys, ask a question.
Sure, absolutely.
Just for my clarification, and maybe we don't know the answer. Is it 207 or 193? Or do we not know yet? It's 193?
They reduced it to 193. But as Ralph indicated, and as I put in my memo, there's only one bullet. So that's all I was able to review. So I didn't see where those trees were until we had subsequent discussion. And it seems all clear now.
I'm cool. And in the 193, are the 55 maples?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll probably go through that again just to make sure that my numbers are tight. But since we'll have the same number designation, it'll be easier to swap in and swap out.
Our landscape architect is on the line also. If anyone has any specific questions.
Yeah. Hi.
Hello. I didn't catch that last request. Were you looking for me to bring some plans up?
No, I just... I was just saying if anyone has any specific questions that, you know, you're there.
Well, actually anticipating questions, comments from the Conservation Board, it might be good to have your planting plan up on the screen.
Sure.
Thank you.
I can certainly share that, let's see. Not sure what you're seeing at this time.
The schedule.
So this is the actual schedule, the planting plan itself. It's... One moment, why is this not going back? One moment, let me see if I can reshare this. Here we go.
Do you have a schedule of the trees that are scheduled to be removed as well?
Yes, that's here in this plan.
I was starting with that schedule, but I mean, a mapping of it.
Yes.
No, that's on the house plan. They just have the table.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, I do, I only have the table. I don't have the actual survey with the trees and numbers on that. I'm trying to access my actual planting plan right now, which for some reason is not rotating back. Bear with me one moment, I'm going to get this fixed.
There it is. It's on. It's on, this phone's a relic. You did it.
I think it's just a maze.
There appears to be actually a delay. The plans are pretty extensive, and the final page has quite a few images attached.
They're on.
It's on, it's on. It's on.
So this is the actual planting plan. I'm not sure if anyone would like me to run through it extensively or give a general indication of what's happening.
Perhaps to go through where the removed trees will be because I don't think they're represented here.
No, they're not.
No, they're not.
They're not. So that would be difficult to indicate on this plan. The engineers have submitted an actual survey with trees that are removed. This is our end of it. We actually showed their charts on our plans and actually their tree replacement calculation. And then we gave some of our recommendations here. But the top plan is the planting plan.
Sabina, I'm going to pull up my plan that shows the removals. If you could stop your share for a sec.
I certainly will do that. There you go, all set.
Jeffrey, any questions?
Is it?
Any questions, comments?
There you go. Nice. So it came to the end.
Okay, so to orient everyone, the right-hand side of my screen, where my cursor is moving up and down, that is Route 128 Harmond Road. This is the existing site as it is now. That it is two lots. Wetland here in the back. I'm pretty sure everyone is familiar with this site. The existing house was in this area. And all the Xs are the trees that are being removed. Not sure what anyone wants to see in particular. I could zoom into any area that you'd like.
You can also use the screen to zoom in on that board. Do you want to open the public hearing?
Yeah, well, it's open, but yeah.
Okay.
Sure, I just asked if there are any board member comments. If not, we'll open the comments or questions for the board, uh, the public.
Thank you so much for putting this up. And at some point, if you needed there, that's because I may want to refer to it. Great, so thank you. So good evening, I'm Victoria Alzicidi. And I'm the Chairperson of the Newcastle Conservation Board. And I'm here with two of my colleagues, TR Kelly, who is a very active member of the Conservation Board, as is Sergio Morano, who's also a very active member. And of course, Dennis is our advisor to Newcastle Conservation Board, representing this town. And TR and I worked very closely on the memo that we've submitted. Has everyone received the memo? I have some extra copies.
We have it. Could you give us a... We just got it. Can you give us a synopsis?
I absolutely will. That's the plan. So just to kind of preface this, thank you so much for the opportunity to submit this memo. You may recall I spoke remotely last time. And it was nice to have the opportunity to put into words a lot of the concerns of the Conservation Board. And just as kind of a friendly reminder, you know, the Conservation Board was created by the Town of Newcastle to really represent the environment. And, you know, many of you are on the table today, which is fantastic, to represent the applicant. Really, the environment doesn't have a representative other than us. So we are here really to speak for the trees, to speak for the animals that live in the trees. It's interesting, as you put this up. I was just thinking of our meeting last night. The Conservation Board meets, the first meeting, Monday night of every month. And we had a special guest speaker from the Bedford Conservation Board talking about wildlife corridors, how the animals, the wildlife, need to have a certain number of woodlands, certain amount of woodlands to travel through so that they can find food, so they can nest, they can den, raise their families, find food and water. And one of the interesting animals we learned about that I never knew before is the flying squirrel. Flying squirrels need contiguous mature canopy trees because they don't fly, they glide. So they go from one tree to the next, the canopy. So as I was looking at this, I almost had the chills because all of this is, I'm sure, flying squirrel habitat, which we probably haven't even thought... We certainly didn't put in our memo because we really prepared it before last night. So we need to really think about what we're losing. And of course, we're gaining homes for people, and we understand that. But all the creatures who live in this woodland area are losing their home. And I think that's really important to be aware because wildlife right now face so much threat because there is so much development, and there are so many trees and woodlands coming down. So we feel it's very important to be here tonight to really talk about what can we do as the town-appointed committee to kind of bring up the issues that might be important for us all to conduct this application. So the two points that we are here specifically to talk about tonight are, as we've been talking about, as Dennis mentioned, the Norway maple replacement. So traditionally, you know, you think, well, they're invasive trees. They don't need to be replaced. But we are fortunate that we have a tree code that does give some discretion to the planning board to consider the impact, the benefits of the trees that are coming down beyond whether they're invasive or not. So when you start seeing all these trees, number of those, as we know, 57, I believe, are Norway maples. They are part of that forested wooded area that's going to come down. And they serve a very important purpose. We documented that a bit in our memo. So because they serve the same function as other trees, like the animal doesn't necessarily know. When that flying squirrel's going from tree to tree, they're not saying, is this an ash tree? Is it a, you know, hemlock? Is it a maple? Is it a Norway maple? They just know it's a place where they can land. The birds know that they can land there, they can nest there, they can lay their eggs, they can find food. So basically, the wildlife is losing those Norway maples in the same way that they're losing the native trees. So we believe that it's a one-to-one replacement requirement, that they should be considered trees because of all the ecological benefit that they provide, just as every tree does. So we did the research as well, looking back at the comparative precedent that Button Hook set, looking at this good-to-fair condition of the trees as the rationale for replacement. And we know that there are, you know, a number of those trees that do meet that requirement. And so because of the intentions as well of the Newcastle Tree Code, which really set a very important precedent, we're very proud of our tree code in this town because it does very clearly state, you know, the importance of looking at the trees for habitat reasons, for clean air, clean water, clean soil, et cetera. So in light of the imperative of the rationale and the reason that the tree code was created, we've documented a number of the... Of the standards that are outlined in that code here in the memo and in light of the precedent that exists based on how the planning board handled the trees at Button Hook, we would encourage you strongly to please make that same decision here, build on that precedent, and do the one-to-one replacement for those Norway maple trees. That was the first point we addressed in the memo. The second point we addressed is the bird-friendly glass question. This board actually commented on an applicant's presentation a number of months ago, 1015 Harts Gravel Road, which is being built right near... It's a one-family home, very beautiful design, very elegant, high-end home, right near Turner Swamp, which is of course huge, you know, habitat, especially for birds. And so right now, many of us have driven down and passed this. It's a decrepit, old, you know, hasn't been used for many years structure. And the birds are not even used to flying, you know, ceiling glass. And that's a whole thing anymore. And there will be a beautiful house now there with a lot of glass. And it really is a hazard for the birds, right? So the planning board talked about that. We raised the question of requiring bird-friendly glass on that structure because we know that the birds will be actively flying through, and many of them may hit the glass and be mortally wounded and die. And we talked about the fact that it's a horrible experience for us as adults to see a bird flying to a window. They do live in the suburbs here in the wooded area. You've probably seen that happen. And for kids to see that, it's a very painful experience also. Very, something that we all want to avoid. So this property that we're talking about tonight is of an analogous nature because, as Dennis Corelli has pointed out, he very astutely noticed that this area is what's considered a very rare. There aren't many left. Wet meadow, basically, the plants, the insect life, the wildlife that utilize a wet meadow really now rely on that because it's precious. You know, we think of a swamp, one of those, you know, we think of dry meadow. This is very rare, and we need to protect it, which is why we're very happy that you've built away from that area so that we can preserve it. And what we've been thinking now is how do we protect the birds who live there, who frequent, who will continue to frequent? They're going to be losing this, right? We know that. But they're still going to come to use that meadow, hopefully. Hopefully, losing this won't mean that they're gone from the area. But we're hoping that they will still will continue to use the meadow, and we don't want them to crash and die. So there's a lot of good research done now and a lot of good precedent setting to use this bird-friendly glass. And as I mentioned, that 1015 Harts Gravel Road, the architect there, and I just reconnected with the architect's office recently to confirm everything. But they did agree during their interactions with the planning board to use the bird-friendly glass. They found that it was totally viable, that it wasn't going to interfere with any of the plans or the enjoyment of the space by the residents who lived there. And so the research that we did here, we've outlined it, really talks about the fact that there are some really good options. The company that was chosen by the 1015 folks is listed here. There's a lot of research on the glass options that they have. And one of the reasons the architect... Who's the architect here? I should be looking at you up. Is it Jeffrey? Who's the architect?
This is the builder.
Right, so you're the builder. So would you be dealing with the windows?
Yeah.
Choosing the windows. So I'll just to talk with you directly. What is your name?
Grant.
Grant Victoria. So the hope is that if you can find windows that don't interfere with the visibility for the person, for the people, but that the birds can see. So there's some... I'm getting the chills even as I say this. There's some amazing new options now that people can't see. Whether it's ultraviolet, you know, people think it's always going to be these dots or something kind of etched in. There are many, many better options now. And one of the reasons why the 1015 homeowner or developers were happy with this company, that primarily had it, I think it's documented well in here, is because they were very customizable. They work with each architect to find what's going to work best. And they were very easy to work with, they tailor. There's a lot of different options. So what we did is we put in this memo the name of that company. We certainly don't have any allegiance to that company other than the fact you'll see that the American Bird Conservancy has done a lot of research on bird-friendly glass. And there's a documented in here, a guide that they have. Many, many pages, but it lists all the different options. And since that guide was created, there are more options now. So we noted a couple of other companies in here analogous to the one they chose that you can look at. We don't... It doesn't really matter to us which company you choose to work with. Um, but we just hope that you would look seriously at these other options, because they're a win-win. They'll prevent the birds from dying, and they will not interfere. In fact, maybe they'll make the person who lives there feel really good, that they're not gonna have to worry about birds crashing and dying. Which is not, never fun for anyone. Um, and really, birds right now, one of the reasons we're bringing this up to the planning board is because there is so much threat to bird habitat and to birds. So we documented in here, um, a study that just came out in twenty twenty-five, um, that the Cornell Ornithology Lab, which does a lot of research on birds. Um, and other scientists were involved in, called the State of America's Birds, and it looks at huge decline of bird species. Um, since the seventies, and this was kind of updating that seventies report. Huge continuing dramatic loss of birds, perhaps even extinction of species. So that's because of climate change, you know, weather changes, it's because of habitat loss. Um, so we really need to, as a town, as people, be really sensitive to what we're doing, and how we can help prevent mortality of birds.
Can I make a comment in relation to this issue? Is that, is that allowed?
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure. Identify yourself.
Uh, Sina Baron, I've been a Realtor in Chappaqua for thirty-two years. I think since two thousand and twenty-one, I've probably sold about a hundred and thirty houses alone in our school district. In my career, I've probably sold over three hundred. I have never, ever had a complaint from any of my clients or former clients about a bird flying into their window and hitting the glass. I've had many complaints about skunks, deer, and other wildlife. But I have never had a single incident of anybody complaining about a bird flying in, into their window. I, so I, it seems to me that it's a
Respectfully, that's anecdotal in science, but
Yes, it is anecdotal, I realize that, but I just think it's very rare.
Yes, Victoria. Your statistic of one billion birds a year, where is that statistic from?
It's the Cornell Ornithology, it's American Bird Conservancy, it's like, it's a commonly cited
And that's, that's flying into windows? So billion birds a year die from flying into windows? Is that what it's saying?
I think I think that's a overall, I, I think that it's a huge number. Um, and I do think there is a huge, I mean, I think that's actually a worldwide number of the billion, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, so
But is it, I'm just, is it a windows, or is it, is it everything?
No, they, they fly, power lines, windmills.
Okay, is, is, if the environment, its cars, if it's windmills, so it's, it's globally
I guess you could call it collision.
Yeah, it doesn't want to do with us, but yeah, it's not just
Collision.
Yes.
Right, I guess that, that's the way to, like, human interference.
Humans are killing a billion birds a year with their stuff, okay, but it's not windows.
Right, but a great nutter, in other words, Sina, with all due respect to what Sina's saying, if I could show you my text messages, almost daily, I hear from someone, Victoria, a bird just crashed.
I just wanted to
Not be in, yeah, yeah.
What wildlife rehabber should I call? But it's, it's, it's twinging, it's convulsing, what do I do? So I'm, I, I hear you, and maybe that's your experience, and I respect that. But overall, there is a lot of it happening, which is why it's on our radar.
Another question, which you may not know the answer. Um, because you were talking to architects, did they give you any indication on what the uptick is for a standard window versus a window? You know, is it a one percent uptick, or is it a hundred percent uptick? And if you don't know, please say, I don't know.
I don't know.
Okay.
When I called the architect's office, I spoke to the architect's office, I didn't speak to the architect herself.
Okay.
Um, but he pulled out a file, he gave me all the notes. Um, I told him I'd love to, and they haven't built the space yet, so they haven't cho, they're not there yet. So he just basically read me the notes about why they chose this particular company, and gave me the verbiage. Um, he was not able to speak to any specific selection and impact of that, because they're not there yet.
Now, does anybody remember on the house on Harts Gravel, did we, did they do windows all around, or just the windows facing the swamp?
Windows facing the swamp.
The windows facing the swamp, okay. And that was because our concern was the birds coming out of the swamp and going right into this house.
Correct.
Would that be similar then, Greg, do you think, here with the back of the houses?
Yeah, you know, because that was one house, this is four houses. I think the one house on Harts Gravel may have been a higher price point than these four homes. Um, and I'm just always thinking altered solutions.
Yep.
So I'm wondering if they are flying out of that wet meadow, maybe it's, and I'm, you're gonna have tenants to talk amongst the
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So maybe, I'm just thinking, maybe it's that side, but I know the other side of the street, you know, okay.
Fifteen to forty percent increase of costs.
Fifteen to forty per window, okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that, that can add up.
We're incorporating this in construction.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're on the numbers.
Yeah. The only solution which actually, and you mentioned it, UV solution, which is allows you to actually not visually see the dots, or there is no dots, it's actually inlaid in the glass itself internally. Because we have a solution, what you talked about, as external. They're basically applying the coating on the outside, you can actually, they haven't done it yet, but they'll find out, that you will be able to see, especially from the outside. So they're gonna have two-by-four inch dots throughout the glass, from the exterior. On the interior, it's gonna be a little bit more obscure. Now, the only solution which works with modern-style, high-quality, uh, window is an internal solution. And that increases cost of our window package by about twenty-five thousand a house.
And that's if you did every window?
Correct.
Okay.
So as far as the concept of where the birds are flying to, because I would figure it's three hundred and sixty degrees, but assuming the likelihood of them flying towards the road. When you have a gigantic park right behind us, remember, we're backing up right to the park. We have twenty-four acres. We're only using very small portion of this twenty-four acres. In fact, we're using six of twenty-four. Where is a canopy, which is uninterrupted, of additional eighteen acres on our side, plus entire park? Which is, I don't know how many acres, but four hundred, something like, it's, it's substantial.
Yeah, substantial.
There are large. So, the whole concept of birds just flying from the meadow to the road, when there is no trees anymore, because we have to clear it for my site. Instead of birds flying back to the park, which is where the canopy is, is specious. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, I can, I can argue for any of these points. But the reality is, when you have a meadow, and you have a tree canopy, and then you have a road, and you have houses in between. I mean, if I were a bird, I mean. I mean, that
The phrase is, what's the preferred habitat, you're saying?
I mean, I mean, yeah.
I understand, yep.
It's like, you know, going from here to Manhattan, I mean, yes, there are some birds could fly into buildings in Manhattan as well, and probably came to Manchester.
I mean, we, we experience it here in Town Hall. I mean, we definitely have the birds hitting our windows from time to time.
It usually happens in the spring, when the berries are ripe, and they're getting drunk off of eating berries.
Yes, yeah.
Our males think they see another male, but it's themselves, and trying to fight, you know, it happens.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not saying that, you know, we're littered with it, it just happens.
Right.
But that's all I could say, so now, right, this becomes the game of weighing, you know, to your point, there's a cost-benefit analysis, and
And also likelihood, I mean, we're not, we're not taking, I mean, we're not taking twenty-four acres, putting fourteen homes on it. You know, and basically, taking, you know, I keep on with their quantity, we're preserving eighty percent of the, of the law. You know, and again, it's not our desire to cut the trees, I mean, every, you know, I, I would love to keep all of them, it's just a requirement, I mean, it's a safety requirement.
Yeah, I blame the engineers usually for that, that's okay.
Boy, again, I mean, the reality is whoever, whoever
How does both engineers are not in the room?
Whoever's responsible for it is, uh, reality is, it's a safety and other issue, but in this particular case, the way we design, we're always designed with nature in mind, and all our projects incorporate, we cut as little trees as possible. We don't do tabula rasa, we, we don't bulldozer, I mean, you know, we're, we're always very sensitive to it, just because, you know, I don't, I don't see any reason why you wanna replant. Cut the old trees and replant on the tiny new trees, I mean, that's just, doesn't make sense to me. But anyway, the point is that, you know, we're already penalized for being safety-conscious, and the fact of the matter is, you know, creating safe environments. On top of it, we're preserving majority of the site. We set our houses back voluntarily in access to what's required, and so we said, but. I cannot guarantee that no, no, no bird will fly into the glass, but it's the same thing as here, so I mean, I don't think that it's, it's, it makes sense to impose on us something like that, where results are, you know, not justified.
Yes.
So, I appreciate your comments, you used the word specious?
Specious, yes.
I just wanted to find that word for everyone. You said it was specious to suggest that we use bird-friendly glass on these particular houses, right? Specious means superficially plausible, but actually wrong, misleading. So, I really need to, um, with all due respect, stress that we are not birds. How many people in this room have taken courses on birds? Can you raise your hands on bird behavior? Okay, I've taken many courses on bird behavior. It's not that the bird is going to fly out of here and smash here. Birds fly around, they go in all directions, they land in different places for all different reasons. This is a, an e- extension of an actively-used bird habitat. So I hear what you're saying. You would think, okay, so if the house is right near, maybe Turner Swamp is more analogous to that, exactly that?
Yes.
The birds are still gonna be flying all over this area.
But wouldn't it be true to, to, this part come out as well?
Perhaps, I mean, the, the goal is, because of the issue with birds, and needing to conserve birds, and do what we can, right? You're gonna build these houses there, right?
Yeah.
So if you're gonna build these houses, this is the compromise. And I hear you, twenty-five thousand a house, how much are you gonna make on each house? I mean, we don't, that's, I'm not even asking that, you don't have to answer that. But on a, on a, for the planning board on proportionality kind of test, so how do you do your work? How do you allow people to build their homes, and also do no harm, or do as little harm as you can? There's an opportunity here for a hundred thousand dollars, or, and I actually think it's not just flying this way, these birds are flying all over the place. So I hear, I totally hear what you're saying, Greg, and I, I, had I not taken all these lessons and been totally into these issues? I, when I lived in Brooklyn, I would have thought the same thing, like, I, I was not taking these terms. But they're flying all over, they're coming towards the houses out of curiosity, and they're seeing windows that they're gonna hit. So, it's, it's a more complex, it's not meant to be manipulative or misleading in any way, it's meant to be educational. Our job for the planning board is to be educational, and to give a voice to some of these scientific issues that are really important. Not in any way to harm what you wanna do, but to do the right thing, and to do the biologically right thing as a balance. And, um, we have a chance here to possibly save many, many lives of birds. There are specific birds that we're referencing in this study, including eastern tabbies. But we, we're more, more common here, and many of us have lived here a long time. I used to see them all the time, I hardly ever see eastern tabbies anymore, they're losing a lot, um, of their habitat, so. Um, and I would, I would be personally happy to talk with you, I would be happy to connect you, I don't know if you've spoken with, um, the company here.
Victoria, I, I, I understand, this is a little bit of filibustering on your part, so let me just answer. I think with the fundamental issue
Please be respectful, it's not anything to filibuster, I'm trying to give information.
I will be, absolutely, I will, I will be respectful. So, I think the biggest issue that what you're doing here is effectively creating a precedent. Because our side is no different from majority of other sites here. So what you're doing here is, you're creating precedent for any new project which goes in front of a planning. You, you, you're not setting any, you're setting parameters for all the houses, which are going to be, from now on, going to be approved by this planning board, potentially, to have a bird-proof glass. You're going about this the wrong way. What you should do is, you should go get the code, you should, you should, you should focus on the fact that this is not a code issue. You should, should make it a code issue, and then everyone who builds in Chappaqua will be required to use bird-proof glass. That's what you're doing, and this is a, another way of doing it.
But you understand there is a wet meadow.
So, I understand where is, and I also, where is gigantic park. I also understand, you just said, that the birds fly everywhere.
In every direction.
So, so, in every direction, and not in just these houses. We had houses across the road, we had houses here. So what you should do, instead of coming here and trying to do this to us, you should work at the code level, and get everyone to accept that burden. Because there is no reason why we should be the ones accepting that burden, when everyone else who doesn't go in front of a planning board and builds a house, or does a house extension, or does anything else related to that, is not burdened by this additional cost. That is the way to approach it. So I respect what you're doing, and the way to do it, and maximize your reach, is to do exactly what I suggested. Go and do it at the town level, at the code level, but don't come to a planning board and tell me what to do.
So, so, so Victoria can start that process tomorrow, she likes to put a day, we're here, dealing with your project, and we have the decision-making.
Yeah. Exactly. Yeah. Sure.
So you should be talking to the chairman, not to Victoria, and be a little bit more respectful.
But I'm I'm, I'm being very respectful because
Okay? And Victoria and her committee can start that process doing code and, with, with town tomorrow, but for today, let's focus on this.
Yes. Absolutely.
And the application is yours, that's for today.
Yes, it is.
You've made some very good points, but the board has made some very good points, and it's up to us to figure this out.
And I think
Well, Bill, we're back, you're absolutely right.
Okay. And I think it's important, um, this, this application's been around a while, and the applicant has really worked with us very, very well, because we have reduced the impact from this, this particular project. It's a conservation development at this point, it wasn't initially, so we have reduced the impact very substantially. Uh, there are some necessary impacts that are really generated by engineering, by traffic, etc. And they've borne that kind of burden. It does get to be, I think, at a certain point, uh, enough is enough in terms of the burden that an applicant should bear when they start a project, given what they thought was going to be the project, and then, you know, get shrinks or whatever. And again, I think what they have done, and what we have done, in, in making this a conservation development, has we've done a great job in terms of, in terms of reducing those impacts. It, I will, I'll tell you very frankly, that, uh, you know, the birds were not considered, I wish we had seen this maybe earlier on, but I think also to the applicant's point, this might be something that could be, uh, better addressed, uh, on a, on a, on a, you know, town-wide basis. Out of fundamental fairness also, because if someone comes in, knows that's in the code, well, then they can plan accordingly, and then they can price accordingly, or figure this accordingly. So it's, um, I mean, anecdotally, I have lots of bird feeders at home. Um, we've got markers all over the windows, and if they're chased by a hawk, they're still flying into our windows. Uh, when we first moved into the house, we had a grouse that fell into the window, uh, flew into a window. And an actor, it was a great meal, because my wife plucked it, clinged it, I walked, and we had a terrific meal. It was, uh, one of the highlights of, of my house ownership. But in any event, um, uh, we understand this, and I think it's, of course, like, everything we do here, it's a balancing act. In terms of, you know, concerns for the environment, concerns for specific birds in this case, but, I mean, we have concerns for more, you know, all of the environmental factors out here. Um, so, um, uh, we really appreciate it, because I think it's, it's really important to get this input. I really like the suggestion that we actually take this up with the town board and let them
I think it's a great suggestion.
Uh, and really have them look at this and see, you know, have a public hearing on it, and see what we wanna do with it, because it is something that really has not been given, uh, sufficient attention over the years, uh, by us, uh, by the town, etc. So it, it might really be something that, um, um, if we take care of the, the, the tree law, that's for lying around with the town board for a few months. We, we can address that, because I think that is, is something that would be, um, uh, really good at levels of planning. Uh, not that, for competition, just because it lets people know upfront. We tried to do this as much as possible. We talked, we, we talked about the HOA and the ownership. One of the issues on this is, we're very, very careful as a town to make sure that these agreements are recorded. Because what we've had in the past is, we have so many people who buy houses later on, that are not on notice in terms of, hey, did you know there's an Eastman across your property? Did you know that you're in a wetland? Did you know you're in a buffer? Did you know, uh, whatever it might, you're a conservation, uh, development, and you're not allowed to go any further, you can't put a pool there, etc. So, uh, we try to do that out of fairness, because we've had a lot of situations where people come in, they have no idea. We've had people actually buying from one house in town to another house in town, and then just being surprised about what happens with that purchase. So as much as possible, this could be something that could be put into the code and, and be, uh, put people on notice, builders and, and developers. Um, renovators, this is what you're gonna have to do. And, and I think it's important to make sure we address it in terms of renovation, because we're seeing more renovation and construction at this point in the town. So when people redo their homes, and they're putting up these windows, this might be something that, uh, the town wants to take a look at, and, and see whether or not they can incorporate this in the code. If, if we feel that's what we should do.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, my, my personal, uh, uh, experience has been, we've put all kinds of stickers and everything else, and it hasn't worked very well. Maybe it has, maybe we've reduced mortality substantially, but we still have, it, it really is heartbreaking to hear that thump on the windows, oh, no.
So, and the decals are not as effective.
I know, my, my, my house is older than that.
It's kind of the old tool, I've done the same thing, yeah, but these other new approaches are.
So
Yeah.
So kind of thinking this along.
Yep.
I don't know how long it would take the environmental committee to get the town code changed, right? But I'm assuming it's not gonna happen overnight.
Correct.
Um, I also agree with the applicant that if our decision made on these windows, like button hook, is gonna also maybe tee up a precedent for everybody who starts coming in down the road. I don't personally know enough about the topic where I can lean one way or the other. I see pros and cons on both sides of the argument. Is this a decision we have to make tonight or can this be something that we have some more time to discuss?
Well, I, it, it depends. Um, I, I would anticipate that we will probably move forward to close the public hearing and then adopt the neg deck.
Okay.
Um, the resolution and decision would still not be made this evening, we still have to have the resolution, uh, drawn up.
And the neg deck decision is not impacted by the birds?
No.
No, right? So we can still do a neg, we can still.
You can still do a neg deck.
You can kill commensal species and it's not gonna impact secret. That's how, that's how life works.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, okay.
Yeah, the more, when they start building, they will kill something. Every project will kill something.
Of course. Yeah.
Chipmunk something underground, that's a reality.
Yeah, sure.
Worms, shit, whatever.
Yes, we know that.
We're here on the planet.
Yeah, it doesn't rise to a threshold level in secret.
Right.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Um, because I don't wanna hold up the applicant because they have been here for a while and we have done good work, so. But I don't want to ignore the thoughts of our sister committee. Um, that's why I was asking, can we, is there a way where we can maybe put a pin in that one and do all the other stuff so we can have more time to talk?
Well, the other issue could be, uh, to your point, uh, that you, that you raised, um, is it necessary to have, uh, the entire house, uh, equipped with these kinds of windows or is it just the side with the meadow? Uh, that's important. And what does that mean if it, is it one-fourth of the, of the cost that it's might be?
How do you, but how do you know that that's the size?
Right.
Or is it the upper, is it the upper windows or the lower windows?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
I mean, in, in all reality, if, if, if the conservation board wrote a memo to the town board or it's something they wanted to investigate, we have to dig into the science, science of how to protect the birds and where you place glass in relation to flight patterns and for which birds and, you know, there'd have to be some research, research done to formulate a proper law.
And I think, great to, to respond to your question is, I don't think we have hard data
Yeah.
that we can use to support a decision to say.
Like, can we say the lower windows and the upper windows, right?
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta do that.
Can anybody in this room say, oh, they fly into low ones or the upper ones?
Right, and how often, and, yeah, so I, I, I personally don't think that we can impose this on, we should not impose this on the applicant at this point. Uh, we don't have hard data on this site telling us the volume of birds, the species of birds. I don't think it was done as a study, we didn't study it because it wasn't necessary as, as part of a, you know, we didn't do a, um.
You didn't do a secret analysis. Part of the secret analysis, you can call out birds as a species of concern to do an analysis of their existence on the property, their flight patterns or anything of that nature.
Right. Yep.
Which, to be quite honest with you, if there was legislation in place, that might be something that would then be required of properties that are being developed.
Or at least properties in so-called sensitive areas, that would be, right?
That too.
Just as we've done with the wetland law, you know, we have certain areas that we have a hundred and fifty-foot buffer as opposed to a hundred-foot buffer. So again, it may not be one of those things that you do carte blanche, but you do it again based on the sensitivity of, of the area in which you're, you're, you're looking at the development.
The other project that this was done on, was it within the wetland buffer?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was within, yes, it was wet.
Yes, it was in several wetlands at first.
Right, so just, just to reiterate to everyone, we are outside, all of our developments is outside the hundred and fifty-foot wetland buffer.
Right, right, which, which makes the regulatory agency lose a lot of teeth. Absolutely, when I was on your side of the fence, I agree.
Yes.
Just a few, a few points, and then I wanna actually turn it over to TR because he made up also some comments. Um, first of all, we did a significant amount of data collection for this and so that, in terms of taking a minute to think about it, um, to Greg's point, I would love it, I mean, we, I don't want to sound so footman or informal. It would be a valuable process for the planning board members to really dig into this a little bit. Because the, these bird organizations, their scientists, they've looked at a lot of these questions. Is it the top, is it about, you know, all of these, you really may find some good information in here with the bird cases that I think.
Yeah, but it has to be site-specific. We can't just sit there and say, this is what's going on in New York State. We have an application.
I hear you.
So we're charged with dealing with this application, so that data has gotta be site-specific.
I understand.
So for example, whenever we consider wetlands and whatever, steep slopes, we're dealing site-specific. So if you don't have, if we don't have that kind of data, there's no way that we could impose those kinds of conditions on people and have a legal challenge sustained. We're adults.
I understand, so perhaps, I can totally hear you. So with regard to what Sabrina was just mentioning, maybe doing this with a glass is the compromise. Because the conservation board, I suppose, could be really pushing for an, a more of an environmental assessment of a secret study, study on this site because of the birds, because, again, I know we're talking about possibly more generally, but we do have to remember there's the wet meadow here. We have been to the site with Dennis. I don't believe the planning board has yet been there. There's a lot of bird activity there. I don't know how many people, I, it's incredible. How many birds are swooping around? Just, and I've been to many, I've been on many site visits, walked all over the town. It, there's a concentrated amount of birds in this area, so it is a sensitive area. And I kind of don't think they're mutually exclusive, like I think it's fascinating the idea of doing a broader policy with the town board and the planning board. And I do think this is a sensitive area and I do think there are a lot of birds here. I think it's worth exploring for both the planning board and the applicant, what kind of options there are that might work here, that might be affordable. Uh, I saw, I would really urge you to not just dispose of this, but really to spend a minute thinking about it. Um, but I, I do think it's true, this probably could go the secret route because there is, this is such a wildlife-friendly and important space. So with that said, we'll turn it over to TR.
I, I appreciate the opportunity. I, I don't have anything to add on your comment.
TR, can you do that for yourself?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, TR, Kelly, I'm a member of the conservation board. Um, I, I don't have additional comments to yours, Victoria, um, all of which I think are well-stated and, and articulate, um, the very difficult issue here. I'm sensitive to the board's desire to find the equitable balance here because clearly there is an equitable balance for the applicant and for the board and for the town in the protection of its resources. I appreciate that you intend, um, to find that equitable balance. I, the open question is the time, does that happen now? Does that happen down the road after some more study and evaluation?
Okay. I, I, my sense is it probably happens now. Again, um, not to, uh, lay any blame, but this application's been around for years. So, um, frankly, you know, we held this open, we were probably anticipating closing the public hearing last time, except we heard from you and we thought it was important to get the input from the conservation board. But it is, it, it's kind of a, a sense that you're, you're, you're coming in too late to this process. And, uh, I think personally it would be unfair to hold up the applicant any further to say that, well, we think this is a sensitive area, I'm sure it is, but is it distinctively, uh, uh, sensitive? I'm not convinced of that. You have a park, I can tell you very close by, there are other wetland meadows that we've had, we've protected over the years in subdivisions. So it's not terribly unique, it's not completely unique, so we've done this before. Um, and again, technology has changed and I think awareness has changed. And I think that's in favor of, of the things that you're supporting here and, and proposing. But at the same token, I don't think we have, I don't think we have the data for this site to, to, um, hold this up and to say, you know what, we, you know what, even though it was checked off as not an impact, uh, because of certain species, and I guess that's, that's what seeker really looks for, um, I don't think we have enough really to, to say, wait a second, stop sign, let's, let's take a look at this and start all over again in terms of the seeker, in terms of, uh, birds and animals and, and whatever. Uh, we have no evidence, I mean, we've seen this many, many times throughout the, over the years. You know, certain kinds of species of bats in, in certain areas and we've limited the cutting of certain trees during certain seasons because of the prevalence of bats or presence of bats or we thought the presence of bats. Um, we've had, well, we had a fake turtle that we used to bring out just to show, show monitor, you know, but, and we, you know. Uh, and we, you know, we had to watch that stuff, those kinds of things. So it's, it's, it's important to, to do these things, but I really think it's, it's late in, in this case and that is not determinative, but I think it's not only late, it's also late from the standpoint of what we have already done on this, uh, site with the applicant and reducing the impact to, I think, the greatest extent possible, given the constraints that have been imposed on the applicant. Again, we've heard from the applicant, it's expenses and they didn't really wanna cut all these trees down, but, and we kept going further and further because of where they're located and the sightlines that they needed to meet on, um, Route 128. Even though the speed limit is whatever, it's forty-five, you know, the, the traffic is, is actually fast, so we have to, we're cognizant of that. So I, uh, my personal view on it is, uh, uh, I love the suggestion of taking this and, and looking at it, um, on a broader basis, uh, with the town board, uh, looking at regulation perhaps and, uh, and getting data to support, uh, whatever we do in terms of the law. Uh, but I don't think that we have sufficient grounds to impose. If the applicant wants to meet those, uh, that's, that's fine, that's great, it'd be fantastic. But I don't think we have the, I don't think we have the legislative, uh, ability to impose this on, on an applicant. We have nothing in the code right now that says you have to do this. And I think if there were a challenge, uh, without the data, it would be, you know, I don't think we, I, I think the town would be foolish, frankly. So I, you know, I'm, I would propose at this point, I mean, we'll take other comments if there are any other comments, but I'm, I, I would propose that we soon, you know, close the public hearing, adopt the negative declaration and, um, and then move forward for our, setting up a resolution for final decision in the next couple of weeks.
Quick comment, and then, or do this one person and we can still address this during site plan?
Yes, we could.
Or?
No, 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 this would be, this.
So this would be the final decision tonight?
Oh, no, this is, I'm, I'm sorry, this is preliminary, yeah, yes.
This is preliminary subdivision.
So we still have time to gather information and talk about it more if we wanted to, without holding up tonight?
Yes. Correct.
Okay.
There is another step in this.
Okay.
Yep. Um, and by the way, um, to use on this other precedent application, button hook, that never got to final. We got through preliminary and by, one of the reasons it never got to final was.
Button hook's trees, not birds.
And it was not trees, it was, uh, rocks.
Oh, button hook's rocks?
Yeah, because of Native American, uh,
Remains.
Remains, right, and cemeteries.
Burial grounds.
Semenials.
So that was never addressed, it was something that we anticipated we would have to address in final, but it never happened.
They say go back for final.
And they never came back.
No, just litigations.
Well, that's right.
But these guys are comfortable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do we know if there's any code in state that talks about this?
They look half code, et cetera.
Or any other northern Westchester towns?
Yeah, or any of them. Is there?
City of New York, maybe?
Is there, do, do we know?
I don't know, something.
We know that there are.
New York City has a code.
I feel better than me, I, I, I don't know.
I mean, if we had, if somebody already had something on the books that we could look at and maybe it could be something we aspire to, it's not gonna happen overnight, but it could be for down the road because I got a feeling that this is gonna come up in six months.
That would really help a lot.
Twelve months, yeah, right? It, it's, this isn't going away.
Would it be a problem?
I go away with you guys, because it's not gonna go away for a bunch of months.
Would it be a problem for the board or for anybody in this room or for this town if Newcastle is the first in something that did this? I just wanna make sure that's not a problem. As someone who only works for the town and doesn't hear about it, should I tell the environmental coordinator? I could see myself getting thrown in the middle of this.
You've been there.
Fair question, exactly.
Yes, you're wrong. Um, it's, it's, um, I think we've done other things that have been, uh, among the first, if not the first, even statewide.
Classic bags, correct?
Pardon? Classic bags.
Classic bags, right, we were first, I think.
Mm-hmm.
And because.
And, and state of New York.
And Newcastle used to be the leader and then Bedford took our spot because we stopped it a very much. And this, what we consider this a crisis, we did not know about this development. As soon as we got wind of it, we got on it. So just so you know, it was not that we were ignoring, we, we do see it as a crisis because birds will die.
No, I, 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 yeah.
And tonight we have a chance to stay, I don't mean to be dramatic, but it's true. Um, and so I, I do hope there will be an opportunity to take note about this, um, you know, at least to delve into some of the resources, science that we've included here to give you some substantive information about this. So it's not just my voice that's trying to convince you, but that it's grounded in the science and in, uh, and in the environmental issue.
What would be helpful is, we have left the door. If you guys could do that on the conservation board and use that general information to use that as a guide for you and for us for the site. So for example, if they speak in, in terms of certain kinds of birds that are vulnerable, really vulnerable, especially vulnerable. And, um, if those are prevalent in this area, that might be something that is useful, um, for the site and for us.
And perhaps the Sommer River Audubon may work with us on that. I'm just thinking immediately of Anne Swain.
Absolutely. And then, again, a more generic for the town itself, yeah, round us.
So does that mean you are, you may require us to do a study for what kind of birds are on our site?
We're not saying that at this point, no. No.
I just have one quick comment, because if, if the.
Yes, can you identify yourself?
I don't know. I'm Sergio Morado, I'm on the conservation.
Yes.
Um, I don't know what windows you were thinking of putting in. Um, I'm, I'm just wondering if you have, if the, uh, bird-friendly glass is prohibitive. I'm wondering if something is a compromise, uh, at, at least doing something. Um, the divided windows, you know, like the old houses used to have.
We, we have modern, uh, designs, usually.
Yeah.
So is it like just?
It's a pretty, pretty large glass window, yeah.
So would it be possible, would that, that detrimental to put something in that would?
Yeah, that is, but yes, but I, I appreciate the suggestion, no.
Not, those are even the most vulnerable, the big windows.
Yeah, that's what we're talk, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, apparently according to AI, there are no Westchester towns that have bird glass ordinance.
So we could be the first and have pride around that, which is great.
Apparently there is a New York City ordinance for up to seventy-five feet that was passed in twenty twenty, but that's it.
So, so everybody has to screen themselves, but they all wanna be able to see with the big glass. It's an interesting paradox of landing Newcastle in.
I didn't realize that it was the big, I would have made more comments about that because that is the most vulnerable of the birds to find. It's the most structures, just that way.
Okay. Any other cus, questions, comments? Okay. Uh, well, uh, not seeing any further.
Hang on, what, do you wanna check if anybody online says comments?
Sure. Sure, thank you.
If anybody's interested in commenting, just raise your hand and I can open up your line. Okay, I guess not.
Okay, thank you. All right, not seeing any further, uh, comments or, uh, at this point, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second, on favor? Aye. Now, we have, um, Sabrina's prepared a negative declaration pursuant to our earlier findings, that's a secret. One, et cetera. I have one question actually.
Yeah, I have a question. Mine's an easy one. Sabrina, on page six ten, did you miss a box or was it purposely left? Is that E?
Hang on.
E, yeah, E.
Okay, that was mine.
Hang on.
Six ten.
I missed a box.
Okay. That you satisfied, oh my gosh.
And that would be no, that should be checked, no or small impact.
Have to know.
That's E. That's what I thought.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you see any others?
No, that was it, that was it.
That was all what I saw.
As far as that documents.
Okay. Well, I, I'm satisfied with the, the neg deck that was prepared and, uh, for preliminary and, um, so is there a motion to adopt the negative declaration?
Motion. Second.
On favor? Aye, okay. So we're done there. So that is, uh, now the next thing is we have to, um, instruct staff to draw up a, uh, resolution for preliminary approval.
Can I ask Ralph two questions?
Sure.
Two question and then Dennis a question?
Sure.
On, just on tree planting? Tell me, Ralph, is it possible?
We have to have our landscape update, I am.
Is it possible for you guys to get in six to eight trees along that road? As long as it's out of the edge of your expansion, your septic?
If it's outside of our.
If it's outside of all your stuff.
Then yes.
Right? It, I'm just curious, it's, I, it's, you know, I'm thinking, and it could be even small ornamentals, just, this is the grand entrance to your project, right? And you, and you're looking over two lawns and you don't know how these guys are gonna maintain the lawns, but at least if they just had some ornamental or shade trees coming in, I think it would just add more cachet to your project.
No, I agree, because I think we'll look at, uh.
And provided it doesn't, you know, provide your site.
So then you remember, we'll look at some trees along the entrance driveway.
Septic? Agree, I agree a hundred percent. And then my second question is for you. Um, because there always looks in places to plant, right? Back along this edge, is there anything that would be environmentally sensitive to the wetlands that these guys could plant that would work in your world? Because I see they did a lot of nice planting back over here, but we have some openings, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm just wondering if there's anything that's, that would help them satisfy the requirements that would also help you and the wet, the, the wetland. That's all.
So where, yeah, where's the limit of the buffer?
Right, right about where that fence line is.
Yeah, I, I, I don't want any introduction into the buffer and it has nothing to do with the trees, it just has to do with, you know, all these materials that come in, like I told you, this doesn't happen instantaneously, you know, um, everything has like a seed stock, it's, you know, and it's not necessarily a good seed stock and, you know, mulch, whatever, so, or, I, just the less material brought into that area, it won't create undue competition with some invader that you don't want.
Okay, then then perhaps, perhaps as a follow-up, since then now we're gonna rely on the fence to keep people out.
Yes.
Um, I'm assuming each homeowner is responsible for their fence, right, the fence is an HOA, it's the homeowner's fence, right?
Homeowner's fence, yeah. Everything, everything on the property, to answer your question, trees and everything else.
So then.
That's, that's their responsibility.
So do we get written in that they also have to maintain that protective fence as part of their, if we're talking about the.
Oh, yes, cuz that's, that's a buffer fence, that's a.
Okay. That's, so I was looking for maybe Dennis doing more planting to protect it, but if the planting's not gonna happen, as long as the fence is in the writing, then I'm fine.
Oh, that is, is, definitely gonna be something that's ongoing, yeah.
Okay, then I'm, then I'm cool.
And I've. Got the mower to pass it.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, that's all.
Yeah, and again, I think you should.
But the old land with the fence, you know, that's gonna happen, people do it all the time, but you know, you 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 hope not, because when you have four homeowners, you know. Somebody may object to somebody else like, why are they throwing everything over?
You and the guys do the the shavings from the lawn and throw it back into.
Yeah, and they're in pots and.
Hopefully the homeowners will tell their people not to do.
Yeah.
Well, it's also it's open, yeah, so they can see them do it too, yeah, that they can paddle very quickly.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah. That's the nice of having it being a meadow, it's not as.
Well, I think the other issue that is, you've emphasized so much is that this is, this is fairly unique and you wanna keep that um meadow.
Absolutely.
And and um.
Yeah, I mean, it's a part of the U corridor, I mean, reality is that. Anyone who's gonna buy this house is gonna be enjoying it, I fear, it's one of their selling points, so blocking it.
Yeah, I was thinking like little grasses and shrubs, just to protect.
And it's a beautiful, I mean, we love it, I think that the whole view is fantastic, so.
Right, and I would anticipate that we would have a ten-year maintenance requirement of all plantings on some position.
Yeah, flowers. I should plant the. You know, one of those good flowers and people love it, it's awesome.
I thought that's all five.
It works for you, well.
I I have it, yeah, I planted it.
Oh, it's good.
Yeah, I, five, I'm aware.
But I think.
Like spring mix, I think, that's what we.
Those are my own, we till next time, comments.
Right.
I like the one coming into the main.
We looked at that, the issue is that if.
Because septic is. Yeah, and then if 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 Ralph can get work with septic and if Bob's okay with sideline, let's go for it.
If septic is, we're gonna do it anyway.
That's why I asked him about the tent feed, if it was code or not.
Yeah.
But maybe the small ornamentals, right, they don't have to be big maple trees, yeah.
We're gonna do something along that, we're not, we're not gonna queue it. There needs to be some kind of an entrance.
Yeah.
Feature there.
Yeah, yeah, there's you. It also will give you a little bit of protection from the road.
Exactly.
Which is what you want, because you're losing all that with these maples being cut.
Right, and also with all the lights and coming, you know. Generally won't walk as much.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay, good.
I could just say one, say one thing, um Ralph mentioned before about possibly moving trees out of the right of way, um. You know, somewhere, I would just uh, I would just, just uh make mention to be careful for parallel uh. Parallel roadway uh headlights, so just make sure you have screen, you keep screening for the, for that.
Right.
To, you know, respect people coming down one-twenty-eights and not, you know, not be confused about where the actual down the road is, that's all.
Yes, I think they have, uh to your point, Jeff, I think they have a lot of planting with freedom on that eastern side of the the roadway there.
Yeah, I just, I wasn't sure if they were talking about moving that out of, out of the, out of, okay.
It's out of the easement, not the road, not the right of way.
I'm sorry, out of the, out of the easement, I'm sorry, out of, I forget what he said, I apologize.
He said out of the easement, not the right of way.
I think he said out of the easement, okay.
Okay, I'm real sorry, Paul.
Yeah, yeah.
The trees will be in our, on the ground, like, so they're in the property.
Yeah. Okay, good, so uh next order of business is to request staff to prepare a uh.
Draft.
A draft resolution.
Motion?
Second. Yeah?
Not to say it.
All in favor, aye, aye?
Aye.
She can't get a head nod, and I wasn't enough.
She's come to record that, isn't it? Okay, very good, so um we'll have this prepared and probably have it ready before the end of the year, next meeting.
What do you think, please?
Um, I think we can get it ready for the next.
Okay. Which would be to some.
So that would be.
So so plans, are plans included with all as well?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so then.
So Ralph, you'll need to make a file submission of all plans that are finalized.
Yeah.
Make sure, I'll take a look at what you sent me and come over and then go from there.
Yeah, okay, so all recently updated.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
ASAP, so yes, yes.
Yep, yes, please.
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, I'll look at what you sent me and I'll have a nice few tomorrow, because it'll show the reductions and the numbers, and then we'll be back to what it was, and we'll be on the same page, and I'm good with that.
Good, okay, thank you, thank you all, thank you very much. Sure.
Do you mean you need to do it all? Okay, but the small trees.
No, no, I was gonna say.
Next item is owner of parents before the board, this is for Bollard, this is seventy-six Lincoln Lake Road. And this is an application for a site development plan, approval, steep slopes permit, wetland permit, and tree removal permit. The last word, it said seven sixteen.
Hello. Uh, I'm the homeowner, Jason, um I have Nick on the phone from Hudson Engineering here, so let me bring you through some of the changes and comments that we have on site. And then I have the revised landscaping plan and some of the changes to be established.
Hi every, oh, hi Jason, sorry, uh hi everyone, Nicholas Haraya from Hudson Engineering Consulting. Uh so our our most recent submission covered comments from the board and all town personnel. Um I think in these revisions, we have successfully addressed the outstanding concerns regarding the proposed work. Um I believe the largest area of concern was access to the work area in the rear yard and stabilization of steep slopes that will be disturbed. Um I think we've put a plan in place uh that will work for this site. And um tonight, we are here to really answer any questions that may remain. And hopefully receive the blessing of the board to move forward with this application. So uh in the interim, nothing much has changed from the uh proposed work, it is as uh was shown at the last meeting. The only changes really are a new erosion and sediment control plan, which is on sheet C four of the Hudson drawings. Uh which go over the uh access to the rear yard, um stabilizing that excessive steep slope area. That will be using to access uh the work area in the back, um as well as uh once the the site work is is completed for the most part in the rear yard. Um how that steep slope area will be regraded and stabilized for germination and plantings. Um if there are any questions or if you want me to take you to the plans, I I can do so, but if I, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
On your um C dash one map.
Uh-huh.
Uh which identifies the steep slopes and the current grading. The 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 revised grading or the grading after your work is confused, confusing for me to follow, are those the dashed lines?
So uh the grading is not shown on this plan, I'll take, if you wanna look at C dash four. Um or even C dash three, uh I've kinda outlined with thicker bolder lines.
Can you share your screen?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I'm sorry, one second, please, um let me share. Okay, so this is uh sheet C dash three, the uh site plan uh page of the um the plan set. Um so in this area, I'm I'm highlighting or showing the uh steep slopes areas that were shown on C one. And these thicker bolder lines represent uh the three-on-one grading that we're proposing in that excessively steep area in the back. Uh which will uh will stabilize with with matting and uh once it reaches germination, uh that matting uh will be removed. So.
I don't know if you can see it, but does that mean, for example, that this area is not being regraded?
You can't see it.
You can't see that way?
Uh, do I, should I stop sharing?
No, 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 keep sharing.
Okay, okay.
That's the septic system.
The septic system, correct, yeah, we're we're not gonna be grading.
Yeah, right here in this area.
Yeah, we're not gonna be changing the grades in that area, cuz we can't really cover the septic.
Right, so this is really the area of impact.
The water's coming down the slope and larger than that.
Right, and this will remain basically as is because it's septic, got it, okay.
Right.
The primary issue was the water coming down the driveway, down the slope and on top of the septic, depositing sediment and just water constantly. So this is ultimately.
Well, one of the questions I have then is especially because it looks like this is going to be unchanged in this area. Oh, battery's over. That brings up my question, which is why is uh, why do we need to eliminate uh the oak number five? If that's in an area that appears to be essentially untouched in this program? As it's just below the septic, unless I'm missing something, that you're going to go down there and grade there, again, it's it's a large oak, I think it's over, it's a specimen oak.
Right.
Yeah.
Over twenty-five inches, over twenty-four inches.
Right, so so that area is, that area is just outside where 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 tree number five is located. Um you will see on my sheet C dash three that there is some regrading proposed in that area where the new retaining wall will be. And because the grading uh in that area is gonna affect that tree, uh we don't think we can save it. But we are, we we are proposing to replace it.
It's a specimen tree, is there any way that you can amend your program uh to save that tree? Um these are, well, it's a specimen tree, there's a little bit more weight given to them in terms of protection. Uh and it doesn't seem to be critically essential to what you're really trying to do on the northern side of the property. So um I just uh would ask that you perhaps consider uh an amendment to the uh program that might save that oak. Unless there's something wrong with the oak, uh as far as I understand, it's a good health.
Um I can't really speak to that, uh Jason, do you do you mind jumping in here on on the tree, uh number five? Uh it's the area, it's the tree by the trampoline in the rear yard.
Yeah, we were just trying to, I guess, look for some more flat area in there, and by adding, again, the retaining wall and the way that the grading was gonna go. And the slope was gonna go, that was the easiest way to kinda get a larger flat area.
Yeah, that that uh that retaining wall that is being proposed is kind of right on top of that oak, um.
Yeah. It goes right through.
Yeah.
Can't that uh wall be changed and and moved further to what is at the east uh down slope? I I it just seems to me that you you need to give some thought to it, because it's, that's not an automatic, when you start dealing with specimen trees and eliminating those. And the other issue is that these trees have been there for a while, they add a good deal of stabilization to the slope that we're trying to stabilize with man-made uh 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 strategies. So um there's two reasons here, I think, that at least I have some concern with removing that one. Uh I'd like to hear a little bit more about uh removal of the other oak as well, which is number two, and I know that's upslope and pretty close to the house. But that's uh, that's even a bigger oak.
That is a much bigger oak, and it has gigantic branches that hang down over my house and my kid's room, and it's also sort of sitting right on the slope where part of. Nick, would you mind just sort of going, I guess you have it, it's number?
Yes, I'm.
Oh, no, sorry, number two is going to fall, number two is throwing sideways out of the slope like this. Number one is actually where we are extend, we're adding the retaining wall, extending the lawn to capture all the runoff that's coming down the driveway.
Right. Right.
So those two need to go, along with three and four.
Well, and yeah, three is an ash and it's going anyway, so.
I mean, the five, we could probably make some accommodations to move the wall and keep that tree. I don't really have any major concerns.
Everyone, does it see uh number two, the oak, the leaning oak?
I've, yeah, no, I've I've seen the site, I mean, you know, I I mean, obviously you could see it, uh it's a thirty-inch tree that's close to a resident.
Yeah, yeah.
And in almost, in almost every resident likes to highlight, you know, an offspring's room, but I always remind people that we as adults. Um if timber hits us, we don't really fare much better, so, you know, I just wanna make everybody aware of that, that's all, you know. We need to worry about it too, at time to time.
I I look, I think five is certainly something like we could accommodate, and that would obviously reduce the overall plantings that we're proposing here, I think actually we're over. Um in terms of promote, proposed tree planting than what is actually required, so that's not really an issue.
Okay. Um, Supreme, you have some comments?
I did, um it's a type-two action, looking speaker, um the applicant has corrected the zoning table, so that's helped thanks.
Right.
Um, you know, I do wanna point out that the the one hundred fifty-foot wetland buffer encompasses almost the entire house footprint and the development area on the property. Including the area of the septic system, uh majority of the proposed site improvements are occurring within the wetland buffer, um so my, I suggest that um. The wetland buffer line should be labeled on all of the plans and that you may wanna refer it to the ERV for review.
Okay, and and we should see some sort of mitigation too, right, from these impacts?
Correct, correct. Um, good news is that what they're doing is all within the maximum allowable building and development coverage.
Yeah.
Um, and uh all my other comments have been discussed.
Great, great.
So I think it's really just understanding mitigation and letting the ERV take a look at it, understanding the circumstances and seeing what they say.
Well, the ERV could be very helpful in terms of helping us with the mitigation.
Sure.
Again. You, it'd be the type, and provide some guidance.
Sorry, was it behind me?
The environmental review board?
Plus.
They proved that just right before.
Oh, that was conservation, conservation.
There's conservation board and there's the environmental review.
Oh. Pull back my house's windows, I didn't want.
Don't talk about that.
Don't bring it up.
Windows in a wetland? So did I hear tree five's gonna stay?
I keep the tree five.
Is that where we landed?
Okay, I don't, I don't mind it.
Okay, cool, great, Jeff, you have some comments?
Uh, a couple of minor comments, um you know, everything was pretty much addressed. Um the only thing that I I didn't put on the memo, but just wanna bring up to the planning board's attention is that. Uh in this latest iteration of the plan, uh well, I should say in the previous iteration of the plan, there was mention of. The the flat area at the top of the slope was gonna be used for like a car parking area. And that was removed in this latest iteration, I just, you know, wanna, you know, make mention that it matters. Um just, you know, all we were with the, with the, if there's no car up there, you know, just a standard fence would be fine, but if. Cars are gonna be parked in that area, it wouldn't, there would need to be, I would recommend having some kind of a guard, because, you know, you you drive, accidentally drive off that. Retaining wall and it's a, you know, it's an eight-foot or ten-foot drop. So we may wanna just to um, you know, for clarity purposes, just indicate that no car should be parked up there. Unless, you know, they do wanna park cars up there, and at that point, you know, the the, we need to put, you know, put a guard, a garden for the, a garden around for the cars.
No intention to park cars there.
Okay. Okay, yeah, it was just, it was mentioned in a previous iteration of the of the drawings that it was, that there was gonna be some cars parked there, so. Okay, uh like I said, that was, you know, we're gonna have a few, a couple of minor conditions, you know, related to structural things that have to submit, et cetera, but, you know. I think uh all in all, you know, there's some other things that have to do with the, they're they're in the east, so that's in watersheds, they have to submit a notice of intent, things like that, but again, that that'll all be conditioned.
Yep. And one of the other things, just to remind the applicant, is the uh, again, that four-foot uh height fence, uh wall, whatever, I think it's a wall. That will have to, you'll have to have an engineer stamp it to approve it uh for the structure.
For the retaining wall?
Yeah, the retaining wall, yes, I'm sorry, yes. Okay.
And did you say it was, Jeff, did you say it was an eight-foot drop?
When you combine the two walls together, it 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 varies, but, you know, it could be, I know over on the, maybe not near where the, where the cars parked, but I think the. Yeah, top of wall.
Yep.
I mean, just for the applicant, is that, is like, is it an eight-foot drop where a child could be walking on top of a wall and fall off?
Well, it's it's two, it's two-tiered and the, there, we did, we did request they put a guard in for, you know, pedestrian purposes, anybody up there, but. Yeah, it it, the top of the wall is five twenty-three, there's, there's a three-foot drop and then call it another three-foot drop. Or, you know, a a five-foot drop at the highest, so it's, it's, you know, between, sort of between like, you know, five and eight.
Okay.
On the, may I just point out, on this, on this steepest side of the wall, there's a set of stairs leading down.
And it's higher than.
To that back here, yeah, so it's a little higher on that side, but there are stairs on.
Yes, no cars there.
But no cars there, correct.
But that, the entire thing has, has a uh, has a a guard around it, a hand, really, you know, it's, it's. It's a uh kind of a handrail, like you have on a, like you have on a, like a, I'm sorry, like you have on a deck.
Okay, good, Dennis, you have some thoughts? So um. I know that we uh, because of the, of the prior tree.
I know that we uh because of the of the prior tree removal permit, not subject to this um particular application and having to consider this application, uh in summary, um as far as trees, I doubt the applicant's landscape plan is is compliant with both the prior permit and with this uh application, so I'm not, I don't have concerns there. Uh, I guess, 'cause I know you guys had made mention of this, so um I know it's not specifically called out, I guess, on 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 Mr. Voice's plan and maybe, you know, I can work with you on this. Um, I really looked at his plan, you know, there there are two different things going on here, in my opinion. One, certainly, I was looking at the trees for tree replacement, but I think for what you're proposing to plant, uh with the exception of of the rocket leopard, which, as we said, we could substitute, which is also in my memo, I think, you know, from remembering what what the wetland was, uh, you know, a lot of stilted grass, unfortunately. Um, so a lot of the plantings that you were proposing, the types of plantings, the species, the numbers, the concentration, the orientation, I I didn't include that in any of my uh for my tree replacement purposes, because I thought that that was, you know, satisfactory to really credit for sort of enhancement of the wetland. Um, you know, to use, if we wanna use the term mitigation for this, that's fine too, so I think you kinda have it here, I think it just needs to be called out better and and I I I could help you sort of with that differentiation, so that, you know, if somebody says, well, where's the wetland mitigation? Right, at first glimpse, you're not picking it up, because there's just a lot here, understandable, and you are doing a lot, but I I think to help.
To frame it.
Exactly, and that and that.
Frame it on the plan?
And that spot, yeah, and I and I could sort of show you for me without cut off.
Yes. For the year, you do too. It'll it'll be, if you frame it and you out on the planet, we'll help you with the ERB.
Right, exactly, to 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 call that out. Um, and that was sort of my um little snippet paragraph underneath the uh the wetland mitigation findings, and and as I said there, you know, I'm not looking for anything uh new, but, you know, for these for these twenty one plants that were listed, you know, as the rocket leopard plant, if you wanted to.
We were gonna replace that with mountain mint, I talked to Michael.
Okay, yeah, or even what what you have there, however you wanna do it, that's fine, as long as it's native, because we are counting it as wetland mitigation, so it all, it all, it all, it all falls into that. Um, uh, I think I had mentioned this before, you know, some of this stuff, I think, you know, you will, you will attract some of the herbivores, so you're certainly gonna want herbivory protection uh when this goes up, so just whatever, whatever you choose, um, you know, usually, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a plan sheet, um.
Yeah, there was.
I'm sure next to the. Yeah, you know, whatever.
And some mesh panel tree guards and stuff, I talked to Michael today, what?
Exactly. All that stuff, that's perfect with that. Um, and I guess just, I'm I'm sorry that I picked up on that on 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 the symbol uh relative to the numbers, that was like my last bullet, if that made sense.
It did, they were herbivores, he just forgot to label the other trees on the west side, so he's added that label now.
Okay. As long as, as long as it made sense to you and it would be correct, then that pretty much summarizes my comments.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great. So um we need to have the wetland line shown, the wetland line shown, um, frame that information that you guys were talking about. Um, and let's refer this to ERB, so they can take a look. If you can get that mitigation stuff framed, so that it's really clear for you guys in the ERB.
Right.
I think it'll be very helpful, and Dennis, when when can you muster a meeting with, Dennis is at the ERB too, he he never goes away, he never sleeps, he never goes home, he's always out in the swamps.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I spent a lot of time with Dennis, so.
It's all, sorry, here.
Well, if you just start in one section, then you can just do it with the box, or is the mitigation stuff spread around?
No, no, I think it's.
It's all that one area.
It's all in the, almost all of it's in the wetland.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and that should be easy, just call it out.
Exactly. Um, so I noticed today, uh, the next ERB meeting is December fifteenth.
Oh, good.
And on the calendar, uh, there's this holiday called Hanukkah that's also listed for December fifteenth, so I'm going to send an email to the ERB tomorrow asking A, if this is a problem, and if so, can you potentially, as we had to do for November, um, change, right, the date, or you guys are down with some.
Move it.
It would be great if you could, and we'll get back to you on that.
It's also my anniversary, my wife would be very happy if you changed the dates that.
So there you go, there you go.
So consider it changing in the course.
A lot of Campbell wedding for a lot of good reasons, exactly, okay.
Is it the first night or last night?
What's that?
A Hanukkah.
Oh, okay.
First of all.
Uh, I was just going by the town calendar, I saw Hanukkah for the fifteenth.
Well, we could, we could have a meeting, so that doesn't hold us up, and then the next time around, if we see you.
Yeah, right.
It'll be in January.
We'll have their memo, their their request, and maybe we can focus on draft.
Yeah.
Or would you wanna put special public hearings?
We have to be public, that's right, yeah, so why don't we do that?
On the sixteenth?
In January?
January.
There's no way on the sixth.
Yeah, we can't do that on the sixth.
January sixth would be, yeah.
I think we should go to the second meeting in January, in case he can't get a meeting with the ERB.
Right.
I agree.
Go to the twentieth?
Yeah.
Yeah, and also that first week, doesn't the town, where they have their organizational meeting too, and very often they tie up everything.
Yeah.
January twentieth, is that it, January twentieth for the next, uh, for the public hearing?
Twenty. Yes. For public. For public hearing.
So it seems like most of, then now most of the the documentation is to happen on the the landscape plan itself, right? It seems like the site plan, Hudson Engineering, that's okay.
Yep, well, they, well, uh, the exception of uh tree number five.
Line changes.
We're working around that.
Yeah.
Uh, just a quick question, so just so I understand, um, we need to come back for for one more meeting with uh with the planning board after ERB?
Correct.
You have a public hearing.
At least, yeah, we have to have a public hearing, because of the wetland application.
Okay.
And next, we need to ERB soon.
ERB is public?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, everything's public.
Okay.
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 Great, we'll see you then.
Okay, good stuff.
All right, thank you.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you.
You too.
Soon.
Remembering you.
Thank you. That's right, it's recorded too.
I was on Thanksgiving.
Yeah. Some person's likely remembered. It's in the minutes.
For our floor.
Yeah, exactly. All right, so we have the minutes.
And the vault, too.
We have the minutes of the number five? Yeah, I got two things. Uh, as a point, just food for thought. Well, Jennifer, are you comfortable deciding off on it? I mean, you are here, but
Did you read it?
They're fascinating minutes. You can, you can endorse it and and if you read through it, I hope you've actually watched it. But but uh council's always telling us that if you're comfortable with it, you read it, uh, you can you can vote on the minutes. Otherwise, we can't adopt them.
I'm good.
Okay.
You go with that, I think.
I, yeah, on page two, um, line forty and forty one, we talked about Bob stated there regulations about safety and curazones for trees. Um, that statement, that isn't made with any context ahead of it? So I was just wondering, you know, we were talking about where to plan more trees along the road, do we just put it in a sentence so that the contact Bob's statement makes sense? Do you feel what I'm saying?
Not really.
Because if you.
You want the, there are regulations, you want that defined?
Well, no, Steve, because if you read through this, we're we're talking, we're talking about something, and then there's just this Bob's statement, and
Right.
the, but it, there's no, how do you get to the Bob's statement?
Oh, I got you.
So I'm just saying, do we say, Bob said that, but we say maybe before it, I wrote here, this was in response to the board was was talking about adding more planting, asking the applicant to do more planting along the road, and then Bob said, remember, we have this code. So.
You're gonna add the the board?
That's that's what I'm just saying, so.
We're gonna even say roadway, because I think where it's really pertinent is where you raised the issue of putting the the trees.
Along, right, so just so it gives some context about that.
Got it.
Um, my second thing was base, if we go down to line fifty six and based on our conversation with the birds, um, where Victoria's comes and makes a comment, I'm wondering, because we don't say here, do we say that the prior, that, do we reference Harts Gravel Road? As part of Victor, right before Victoria, because she's talking about bird friendly glass, but we don't talk about Harts Gravel, do we wanna have that in the minutes that
Does she mention it later on?
That reference? She doesn't reference it, but what we were talking about it.
I think she actually didn't say it, even last meeting, mentioning.
But, yeah, but it's, it's not in here, I think, yeah.
She did.
It's not in here, right?
Well, yeah.
So maybe she did say something, so I'm just wondering, just so, it again, it just like tightens it up, so when someone's reading this in two years, they go,
Reference Harts Gravel Road.
Why the hell she come up with this such info, right, there's, that's all. And that's it, everything else.
So you could say referencing Harts Gravel Road, Ms. Habs, uh, was meeting for the requested that the action.
Yeah.
Works for me. And then everything else, I thought was peachy.
So as amended?
So as amended, do we have a motion to adopt the minutes?
A motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
I agree.
Okay, is that cool?
Yeah.
That's it. So a motion then to close the meeting?
A motion.
Second. Oh, fellas, Jennifer.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. All right, good.